Just a quick announcement for those present tonight, we're trying to work out some technical difficulties with the video broadcast. So we'll be waiting just a few minutes before we get started, but we'll get started as soon as we can.
You know what the Bible is?
Here?
When you get on, how do you get on your life?
Well, I do. I'm on Provo Guest. I don't know. Bill might know. It's a wifi, not one, but. Oh. Well, I know she was working because she said her internet went down, she's thinking of the video. Had a shout in. Testing, testing. We're good? Thank you, Sandy. Okay, welcome everyone, we'll go ahead and call our meeting to order, it is August thirteenth at six oh four P M. Um, we'll begin with a pledge of allegiance led by Matthew Willwright.
Let allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, uh, and we'll go ahead and do our roll call, starting with, uh, Joel. Joel Temple?
Oh, no conflicts.
By Rita Soto, no conflicts.
Lisa Jensen, no conflicts.
We'll jump to you. Go ahead.
Matt Wheelwright, no conflicts.
Melissa Kendall, no conflicts.
And Jonathan Hill, no conflicts. Before we start our meeting, I would like to read a statement on decorum. Although this is a public hearing, only the presenters and those invited by the commission may speak or ask questions. Unless otherwise invited by the chair, please wait to speak until called on. When speaking, be sure to speak into the microphone so that the record is clear. Please begin by stating your name and city of residence for the record. Please limit side conversations as they interfere with the auto recording of the meeting. If you need to have a conversation, please step out of the chambers. Please do not attempt to interrupt or speak over others. Intimidating or threatening speech or behavior will not be tolerated at any time. Please refrain from clapping, cheering, booing, or being otherwise disruptive during the hearing. Okay, so with that, we will go ahead and, uh, begin with our first item. Phil Warner requests project plan approval for a commercial remodel and residential addition in the DT one or general downtown zone located at seventy-one East Center Street. And Aaron Ardmore will present that for us.
Hey, thank you, planning commission, uh, so this item, um, is located here in the old, some of you may know this is the old Los Hermanos building, uh, that burned. Uh, so important part of this, uh, the background on this one is, uh, it's a landmark property, right? So, uh, the first step was to go through a landmarks hearing, um, for any changes or additions to the, the structure. And that had been done, um, so you'll see in the staff report that they gave a conditional approval and one of those conditions is reflected in this, uh, elevation here on the right, uh, so that condition was to step back. Anything above the second story twenty feet to maintain that kind of historic elevation, um, from passersby. Uh, so they've, they've honored that and as this went through staff review, uh, it's been found to meet all of the, the DT one zoning standards, um. So it's, it's gotten CRC approval. You'll note that the parking, uh, for the property, uh, for the, the new residential units is actually located, uh, in the Wells Fargo garage, uh, behind the structure. Uh, the, the R D A, uh, has parking spaces in there that they're, uh, free to allocate. And they have allocated the necessary parking spaces for this project to, to move forward. Um, let's see if I have anything else on this, I've got some additional kind of flat elevations here. And the floor plans to, to show you kind of what's going on, uh, the amenity space will be on the rooftop. Um, so, uh, that took care of that ten percent amenity, uh, requirement in the DT one zone. And I believe that's all I have, so unless you have any questions for me.
Thank you, Aaron, do we have any, um, questions for staff? Okay, Lisa?
Um, normally, does the landmarks commission have authority to say you can't do something with the interior of a building?
No, it's, it's only.
It's only the exterior for every case? I thought maybe this was a special thing since it had burned the interior, so they didn't have to do any reservation.
Within their purview on what happens on the inside.
Perfect.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Is the applicant here this evening? We'll go ahead and invite the applicant forward, you'll have fifteen minutes for your presentation. When your time is up, you'll hear, you'll hear a ding, uh, following your presentation, if we have any questions, we'll ask them at that time.
I just want to say that the planning commission did a great job on this, a lot of, a lot of went into this, a lot of people got involved and I think it's gonna fit great in this city. If you have any questions for me, then happy to.
Just a second.
Oh, I'm Phil Warner.
Phil Warner.
Yes.
Great, any questions for the applicant?
Um, could you tell us a little bit, I can't tell from the drawing, but like what is gonna be in the main level? Is it just an, like a lobby?
Yeah, the main level is right now, we don't have, uh, a business that's going to go in there that we sold this to. But it would, it will be for sale, so it will be a business that goes into that.
Okay, cool.
On the main level.
Thank you.
Great, any other questions? Go ahead.
Speaking of that, are these for sale units? I can't remember if that was in the report. They are, they are for sale units. They're all for sale units.
Great. Okay, thank you very much, Phil. We'll go ahead and open the, uh, public comment portion of the meeting. Uh, when your time is up, well, we'll invite the, the public to come forward, when your time is up, you'll hear a ding in the microphone. Uh, and at that time it will be muted. Each person may make one comment, if we have questions, we'll invite you to come back to the microphone at the end of the public comments. Um, are there any neighborhood or district chairs present for this item? Okay, so we'll go ahead and open it up to the general public, if you'd like to make a comment, please come forward at this time. Looks like it doesn't fly. Okay, not seeing any, we'll go ahead and close public comment and bring it back to the commission for discussion.
Um, I really think this is a wonderful project and, um, we need more of this, I'm really excited that the, they're using parking we already have there, I think that needs to happen in so many more places in Provo. Where we can hopefully get agreements to make that happen. I'm glad to see that there's gonna be commercial and I'm glad to see that there's for sale, I'm wondering if, um, there's any limitation on that so that maybe like one entity won't come and buy them all up. Um, so I'm curious about that, and also, is this in an area where they can do Airbnb? It is, right, yeah, okay.
Shall we invite the applicant back up and ask those questions?
Sure. Sorry, should have asked.
Mr. Warner, can you come back and answer some questions? So just to repeat the question for the record, um, are there any limitations on the sale of these apartments? Considering things like Airbnbs or a single buyer that comes and buys everything?
I am pretty sure that the city code does not require any limitations on this, in this area.
Go ahead.
Does that answer your question? And we don't really have any limitations at this point.
Great, thank you.
Any other questions?
Any other questions while we've got them up here?
Sorry, I'm not sure if this is for you or for Aaron, but I just noticed that the upper floors have windows over the adjacent property. And I'm just wondering how that works with any future development or is, because you don't own the, I think on here it's labeled not in scope. Can one of you address kind of how that works or would work in the future?
I think that the agreement would be that those would fill in, none of those are egress windows, they're just for light at this point. And they would fill in if, if the other building were to go up, and we know, we, we owned both buildings. And that process of this seems, we sent, sold the, the one says not in scope. That one we, we rehabbed and sold that, and the owners of that are here right now. So, and they, they don't have any problems with it, I, I'm not sure, if there's something in the, in, you know, in the permit process. Or they say, oh, you can't do that, then obviously we'll eliminate those, but, but yeah, they would be filled in.
Just out of curiosity, Aaron, will you answer the kind of standard laws and procedures that apply there?
Yeah, so, so with the zero lot line, uh, allowances in the DT one zone, this kind of thing is possible. Um, so you'll notice that the, the right to the air and light is provided with the north and south facing windows. Uh, in case that does happen, you'll find the same thing on the existing sixty-three east building. Um, they could, you know, have some building come right up against them. Um, so we, we look at those standards as the, the building plans come in.
Great, thank you. Thank you. Okay, any other comments that we have from the commission?
If you just want people to weigh in, I think it's fantastic. So, it'd be nice to not have a vacant and to have something that brings people into a living space downtown and that it's owner occupied, I think they're all great assets.
Do we have any thoughts about the lack of restrictions on it for owner occupied, etc.?
Well, it's not, yeah, it's not necessarily owner occupied, because there's no, there's nothing stopping like a huge company or somebody from buying them all and just doing all Airbnbs because it's allowed. Um, so I feel like that would be, would be, be better if we, there were some way to make, make it so that people with, you know, regular residents would be able to have access and not get, you know, pushed aside.
I don't think we have any ability to ask for that though, so that's just a nice little thing to throw out there and float, but they have met the requirements and they're not asking for any exceptions, so we have no way to.
Nor is there a zone.
To throw that in there, yeah.
Yep. Okay, are we ready for a motion? Who would like to make a motion to start us off tonight?
I will. Um, I move that we recommend, oh no, that we approve the request of project plan. Um, item one, Phil Warner requests project plan approval for a commercial remodel and residential addition to the DT one zone located at seventy-one East Center Street downtown neighborhood.
I'll second that.
Okay, any discussion on the motion? Okay, so we'll start voting at my left. Aye.
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 And I'll vote aye, so item one passes unanimously. Let's go ahead to item two. Brigham Young University requests a conditional use permit for a change of use from elementary educational use to temporary office space for property in the PF Public Facility Zone located at ten eighty North, nine hundred East. And Aaron Ardmore will also present this one.
All right, so as noted, uh, this is coming before you because, uh, within the PF zone, a change of use is required, uh, condition use permit. Uh, so that, that's one reason it's coming to you, but it's also coming to you because there is a requested parking reduction, uh, which the plan commission, uh, is the body which, uh, makes decision on those. So, um, to give an overview, uh, this is the old Wasatch Elementary site, uh, BYU acquired that um, some time ago and are wanting to use it as, uh, office space while they redo their administration building, uh, interior to campus. Uh, so they would be moving all those, those offices to this space. Um, as a part of that, uh, any, uh, new parking provided on the site where there wasn't parking before would need to comply with our parking standards, that includes our parking lot landscaping standards. So you'll see here, uh, some, a green space added to the asphalt for, uh, compliance with that. Uh, then the next page I think is a little bit more detail on that landscape plan. Um, you'll note that it's, uh, it's meant to be a temporary use, um, but because there's no guarantee of that, uh, staff wanted to make sure that it met code in case it goes longer than expected. Um, the the plan has gone through a CRC review, condition, uh, staff review, um, and received approval through that, but there are some conditions noted. Um, that you'll see that came up through that. Uh, one of those is that, um, once the new administration building receives a certificate of occupancy on campus, uh, we would expect, uh, them to transition back there and, and allow this to, to redevelop. Um, if that does not occur, uh, Public Works has made it known that if, if after three years that has not occurred, um, then the, the impact fees would apply to this property. Uh, so just to give you a little bit more background on, on why that condition's there. Um, the other conditions are, are pretty basic, a plat would be required, uh, to combine, so you see the, the parking up on the northeast, uh, adjacent to the ECNB building. Uh, that is currently going through, uh, transition from the city to, to BYU. Uh, so we would need that to be platted with the rest of the site, so it's all in one parcel. Uh, so that would be a condition of approval, uh, before, uh, they can, can finish out their building permits. And then, uh, the big question for you is the, the parking reduction, so they are twenty-five spaces short on what would normally be required for this use, that's a, uh, based on the, the numbers that they would be required, that's a six percent, uh, reduction request. Um, staff's comfortable with this, uh, for a couple reasons. Uh, we, we know that the, the U, the X line will be going back and forth through here soon. That will help, uh, with some of that parking demand. Uh, BYU is right across the street, uh, and they still have a lot of spaces over there that their employees, uh, can, can park at. And, uh, because it's a temporary, uh, use situation, we felt like, uh, a six percent reduction was, was reasonable, uh, to ask for, so we're recommending approval on that as well. Um, if I've missed anything, uh, that was important in the staff report, let me know, I didn't write it, I'm here to, to cover this for another planner, um, but, but feel free to ask me any questions that you might have.
Thank, thank you, Lisa?
Can you explain impact fees, um, what they're used for, why they would be imposed? And why in this case they're not, but then they are if they don't vacate? Can you just explain what that is for?
So, so impact fees, uh, with any new development, uh, the impact fees are meant to pay for the services that city provides, the streets, the utilities and all that. Um, the school that was here took those impact fees with them to the new Wasatch Elementary, so they didn't have to pay new fees at the new school. Um, so that left this as kind of a fresh development with no impact fees being paid. David Day is here, he can, he can help correct if any of that's wrong or, or provide more, uh, light to, to that. But that's, that's my understanding is, um, because this is a temporary thing, we're not imposing impact fees, but if it does become permanent, then those would be applied.
So it's more like a fee that goes with the building permit process?
Yes.
That's, is it like the bonding that you're not gonna ruin the sidewalks and stuff, or is it something different?
No, it's, it's, it's a separate thing, it's like you said, the.
Kind of like buying into the city services?
Yeah.
Okay.
Helps pay for the city services.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Yes.
Uh, just a follow-up related to that, at what point does it become permanent?
Uh, the Public Works has given the three-year, uh, deadline on that one. For this, for this case.
Okay, and for just, for the, I'm, uh, Commissioner Daniel Gonzalez, uh, no conflicts, I came about twenty minutes late. I apologize.
Go ahead.
So, and Aaron, maybe with, you don't have quite the background to talk about this, but the two recommendations are, I find odd. One says six months after the building is the, the new administration building is complete, and the other one says three years.
Yeah.
I find that an odd, potentially quite contradictory, because we know how construction sometimes goes and it could be a lot longer than three years, and can you just help us understand why the two?
Yes, so the conditional use permit itself, um, typically a conditional use permit runs with the land, right? Uh, in this case, we wanted to put a deadline on that because this is meant to be temporary. If at, um, if it, if the new building's built, six months comes around after the CEO on that new building, they still need this office space, they would just need to come back and renew the conditional use permit. Um, while the, the impact fees is, is totally separate from that. Uh, that's just a straight three-year deadline, if you're not out of this building in three years, you've got to pay the impact fees.
So if I'm understanding right, if it takes four years, for example, they would have to pay the impact fees, but they still could stay there under the conditional use permit?
They would have to, yeah, uh, the, the six month after CEO, so that's, that's really the deadline for the conditional use permit expiring, where they'd have to re, renew it, does that make sense?
That, that does make sense, but so then I'm wondering, so if they're forced to pay, your assumption is they're gonna raise that building and do something new and pay impact fees on whatever they do in its place?
Right.
So if in three years they come back in and pay impact fees, are they then gonna have to pay again, or is there an offset? Or is there just gonna be some kind of development agreement that addresses that?
Um, there may be an offset, I don't know, David Day might be able to better address that one.
I would think we would apply those fees to the next building.
To the next building, okay.
Okay, any other questions? Thank you, Aaron.
Thanks.
Okay, is the applicant here this evening? Okay, so we'll go ahead and invite the applicant forward, you have fifteen minutes for your presentation.
Hello, my name is John Cresswell, I'm the campus landscape architect for BYU. Um, so as was been stated, um, we are using this, uh, property temporarily while we are constructing a new administration building on campus. And the plan is as soon as it's done, we will move back into the new building and, uh, future plans for the site have not been finalized at this point.
Great, thank you, any questions for the applicant, yes, Lisa?
Okay, I have two questions about parking.
Yeah.
Um, one, in the transportation demand management plan, um, they talk about having the bike and motorcycle parking amenities, um, which sound fantastic, but do you have an estimate of how many bike? But do you have an estimate of how many bikes or motorcycles are currently parked? Near the ASB that are actually going to the ASB?
So how many are existing at the current?
Cause I know there's like, there's a big bike, bike rack to the west of the ASB.
Correct. Yeah.
Are those mostly student, like, are any employees suspicious?
We have a handful, um, most employees, um, do like to take theirs inside as well.
Okay.
These new expensive bikes, but, but yes, it is heavily used, but.
Despite the signs on campus that say you can't bring your bikes inside?
Thank you for knowing that.
Tisk tisk. Okay, and then I have a, another similar question.
Yeah.
Um. I've noticed on my recent trips to campus that during the day, that the ASB North Lot is never, is not full. So in my mind, I interpret this as there's not a whole lot of ASB parking going on. So that would make me think that there's not a lot of need at the new building as well, or at the temporary building. Do you know how many spots are in the North Lot there? So we can get an idea of like the demand for parking for the ASB?
So recently, yes, we are, you'll see a difference because more people are parking over here. Um, we've been slowly transitioning people out of the building, so.
I'm, I, this is like last year though, so before the, before you started transitioning over.
Yeah, um, we, we feel it's pretty high, hi- the high demand over there, um, for a lot of people that do work at the ASB. Now there is a, a large lot to the west of the ASB, which is also.
So it may be absorbing some of it?
So, yeah, it's.
Do you know what the number of stalls are on the north side of the building? Just so we can compare apples to apples?
I know, we're, we're in the hundred and ten range maybe right now.
Okay.
Yeah.
Not, but not three hundred and fifty.
Oh, no, no.
Okay.
Do you know the number of employees?
It's a two, it's a two hundred and fifty on the.
In the application.
In the report.
Yeah. Did it? Okay. Yeah. Missed that.
I don't think you can count the numbers of the ASB North Parking as only being people from the ASB. Cause if there's no parking in the other places.
There are other spots, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's kinda hard to track.
Yeah.
Well, the reason I say that is because it's very easy to find a spot there. It's, it's not all, it's hardly ever full. And so that to me says that there's not a, uh, you know, an overwhelming pressure for parking at that spot, so. For whatever that's worth. Those are my only two questions for the applicant.
Great. Any other questions?
And I think I would just add, to my understanding, not every ASB office is being located to this school.
Correct.
There are other places across campus taking bodies and cars and all that kinda stuff.
Yep. Correct. Yeah.
Um, I had similar concerns, um. With the new UVX station going in about four hundred feet from your front door, are you anticipating employees utilizing that? Um, is this gonna serve as a park and ride to get to campus with UVX or?
No, this will still be patrolled and, and labeled for employee use only. So, but yeah, we absolutely hope UVX is, uh, utilized here.
It just seems like for an admin building with two hundred and fifty employees, three hundred and sixty is a lot of stalls.
Yeah. Yeah, uh, that was to meet code.
Right.
Really, right? So, so yeah, we'll, we'll definitely see here in the next few months, once we finalize and have everybody move over, how much is actually being utilized. But we expect it to be fairly full.
Do you think you have more than ten employees bringing a bike inside?
I hope so.
Cause I think, I think you're long-term.
And, and inside, yeah, we've got, we've got quite a few bark, um, long-term and short-term bike parking, uh, planned here as well, so.
Cause I, I think the TDM suggested there'd be ten stalls indoors, so, yeah, good.
Yeah. Okay, any other questions? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Go ahead and open the, uh, public comments portion of the meeting. Um, are there any neighborhood or district chairs present? Okay, we'll go ahead and open it to the general public. If you'd like to make a comment, you have two minutes to speak. Okay, not seeing anyone, um, at this time, we'll go ahead and close the public comment portion of the meeting and bring it back to the commission for discussion.
I have so many things, good things though. Can I speak?
Go for it.
Okay, um, I see that. The only two things on the list on page four in parentheses two, so two A and two C. Are the only two things that I feel like apply to this, that it may have an increase in daily or peak hour traffic. And that there may be a significant increase in the demand for parking. Um, the TDM report said that it wouldn't have anything different. I think maybe the peak in and out wouldn't be different, but I guarantee there was a very small number of people going to Wasatch Elementary compared. That are, that are parking compared to the number of people that would be parking here. Um, so. I don't really see that very much is changing except for the number of parking spots required. That being said, um. I, I, I see the impact is very similar. Hold on, let me see what other notes I had. Um, I think that many of the employees at the ASB are likely to be part-time employees. And they probably also have class to attend on campus and they might park in other places, depending on when and where they start their day. Um, with a max number of two hundred and fifty employees that they're repurposing the site for. I can't imagine that they would need a hundred extra spots for visitors. That's assuming that all one, all two hundred and fifty of them drove and parked there. Um. The UVX station is a huge plus. So I really feel like with, with those things in mind, two hundred and fifty parking spots would be adequate. And three hundred and fifty feels.
Overkill.
Not overkill, but definitely sufficient. They don't need more than that. I, I agree that the, the TDM plan. Addresses our concerns. So I would be, I would be welc-, um, willing to accept that dish, difference in parking spots.
Yeah, I agree also. I think that, um, just from my own experience parking in these areas, whether it's the ASB or any part of campus. Like overall, it's essentially adding parking to the university. Overall, and not, since that building will be under construction. Besides, a few construction workers really won't be replacing the use of it. So I think it's sort of like a net gain. Um, and so I think that the parking is sufficient.
Any other thoughts, comments? Okay, are we ready for a motion?
I have a question about the way we do this motion. Um, the conclusion on page four says that we have to approve this, the conditional use permit. And also approve the reduction in parking. So we do, do we do that in two separate motions, or do we do that as one big inclusive motion?
One motion is fine.
So we discussed that we are okay or not okay with parking and then make a motion from there? Okay. So I don't know if you wanna do that with a straw poll or whatever, but.
I mean, I think, I guess for me, I guess if we approve the conditional use permit, it's implied that we're approving.
Okay.
The parking reduction, right? Since that's part of it, so. I also didn't hear anyone with any concerns about it, so if anyone has any, bring it up now.
No, I, I think it does. Fold it into the staff recommendation as part of the other conditions they have.
Yeah, yeah. So if we were wanting to, to push for a, a greater reduction than the twenty-five stalls, or that just, would we alter that condition?
I, I think, yeah.
Good.
If, if you were to move to alter the.
I think I don't wanna alter it. Like if it's there on the ground, let's, let's have them still paint those lines for us.
I don't know that, I think they're acquiring additional parking or additional property to add parking. I don't know if they're acquiring it, they're just bringing the plat and bringing it together. It's property that already.
They already have it. They're just replating it.
I see.
No, they are re- acquiring it from the city.
Oh. Hmm.
Interesting.
That's on the corner of, uh, camp- Campus Lane and nine hundred E- East there.
That's like seventy spots. No, it's like sixty spots.
It will be fewer because of landscaping too.
Oh, I know that parking spot. Okay. Any thoughts there?
Do we necessarily need the additional, what, sixty stalls, forty stalls from that? If it's just gonna require additional paving, then we already feel that this is potentially overparked?
The paving's already there. All they have to do is acquire their property. Like it's already a parking lot for the park.
I see.
And they're adding, um, landscaping to it. Yeah, so e- essentially it's adding to like BYU's net parking. It's already there. They're just grouping it together with this new. Part they've acquired from the school.
Which is someone that parks their regular implant, they're adding parking at the university.
I also feel like it could help the music building. Parking.
Yes. That place is a mess.
I kinda don't wanna give them permission to have less, I think.
I mean, I guess my feeling is if they offered it.
Yeah.
Will take the offer. And it.
I, I, the only question I have is, does that leave any parking for the playground area? So I can see that there's some up here. Is all of that playground parking? Where, where does the playground parking go?
Which playground? You mean the one that belongs to BYU that other people aren't supposed to use?
I guess so.
I mean, I'm not saying that like sarcastically, or you mean for Kiwanis Park? Cause that parking would be the Kiwanis Park parking.
Okay, so this playground right here is gonna go away is what you're saying?
No, there's a playground right there.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's right.
Um, that one is not like a public playground.
Does BYU own that playground now?
They're in the process of acquiring that with the parking lot there.
Okay, okay, that's fine.
Grab that whole corner.
Who are they acquiring it from?
Provo City.
Provo City, okay.
Interesting.
And are they acquiring it just to meet this code requirement?
I think they were already planning on getting that. I, I think they're already planning on acquiring that.
Yep.
Yeah.
So us saying you don't need to use this parking lot will not stop the sale of that and the loss of the park.
I don't.
So I say, please let them maintain that parking lot and count it in their parking count.
And I think if you ask, ask Parks and Rec, uh, they would say that those, uh, old playgrounds, uh, need to be taken down. They've since enhanced Kiwanis with the new playground down here. Um, so I think they encourage those playgrounds to come down.
And, and the tennis courts?
Haven't, uh, so yeah, the rest of Kiwanis Park is, is unchanged, untouched. It's still Provo City.
Okay, how are we feeling? Ready for a motion?
I think the concerns about the park parking. Are things that are gonna happen anyway. We've just sort of been taking it for granted that we could park at Wasatch in order to use those playgrounds and tennis courts. And. It's no longer our property anyway, so.
Well, yeah, uh, my concern would be like, what are their park, when are their enforcement hours like, uh?
After seven PM or four PM?
After six PM or four PM, I don't know what the A lot restriction is now.
It's typically four, but there's exceptions.
Um, and then.
But I also.
Weekends too.
But I also wouldn't be surprised if BYU, because of liability reasons, puts a chain link fence around the entire perimeter. So parking there is not useful to anyone anyway.
Yeah.
Yeah, that is, that is a negative about this. I, I do think that it would be really, really good to get some sort of. Shared parking agreement for parking that's only gonna be used during the week, daytime. Um.
Cause yeah, I think we're giving up some public parking for.
It'd be wonderful, yeah.
Park access. I mean, that's a.
Especially on the weekends when there's people in the pavilions and stuff.
And, and this little playground is gonna stay, is that right? See the one right by the tennis courts?
Hmm.
Uh, just nor- she's pointing to the north. Air, dirt area.
There's one to the left. There's one to the west of the tennis courts and there's one, two of them to the north. Which one?
Both. Those two are gonna stay, is that right?
You'd have to ask BYU if their intention to. On their property.
Is that, is that part of the park?
The city property are gonna stay.
The ones on the city property will stay. Yeah, so that's the north.
It looks like the property line run, runs right through those two spots, right?
Yeah.
So both of those parks are, should be down or be coming down, um, for the city. So you see the property line runs right through there. So in talking with the city, uh, we just came to an agreement just from a liability issue, just better to, that they both came down.
Do you have any response to the parking access on evenings?
Typically around the ASB are, the A lots are till six of PM, um, weekends it's wide open. But yeah, six PM is typically where that's not to say it's set in stone, if, you know, but that's.
Which means that people coming to the music building could use it for public parking and people using the park in the evenings could use it for public parking.
The music building also, yeah, at night, people are coming from all over the city, so.
Yeah, that's good.
So are we all, Joel entertained the idea of. Requiring even less, but it.
I mean, if it's already existing and it's just getting restripped, then that's one thing.
Yeah.
If it was acquiring.
No, it's actually pavement already.
And that's, yeah.
Yep. Any other concerns? Well, we got the applicant up here. Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm totally good with the parking numbers. This is one time when the Transportation Demand Management Plan, like, that's why we have that allowance. I, I feel like we've, it meets the needs. And I'm okay with the conditions that the city has put in place for impact fees and timelines. So the conditional use permit doesn't go on forever.
We just lost our screens. Okay, are we ready for a motion then? Who wants to make it?
I'll make a motion.
Okay.
Um, I move that we approve a conditional use permit. And the proposed TDM for Brigham Young University's, um, change of use from the elementary. Education use to temporary office space for property in the Public Facility Zone at ten eighty North nine hundred East in the Foothills Neighborhood. With the following conditions. First, that a plat, application is approved and recorded that combines the adjacent parking lot with the site. Second, that the approved TDM is recorded. Third, that this conditional use permit for a temporary office space expires six months after the new BYU administration building has received their certificate of occupancy. And fourth, that impact fees that have been transferred, um, after three years. Will. Um. BYU will have to pay those if the buildings are not demolished.
In three years.
Yeah. When permanent buildings are constructed, there'll be no grandfathered impact fees.
I'll second.
Thank you. Any discussion on the motion? Okay, go ahead and start voting at my left. Aye.
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 Day.
And I'll vote aye. Uh, so the item passes one, two, three, five, six, six to one. Any comments you wanna make, Daniel, on that?
No.
No, okay. Let's go ahead to item three. Uh, Stephen Davis requests his own map amendment from the R one point eight, one-family residential zone to A one point one agricultural zone. For zero point seven one acres of land in order to process a two-lot divi- subdivision located at twenty-five, twenty-five west, six twenty north. Um, and Nancy Robinson will present that for us.
Okay, so to, um, explain this, this is how the parcel exists right now. Um, as at a total of, uh, nine point six one acres. Um, and then. This is how the zoning is. If you, um, take out the red square, everything below that is R one eight. But there is going to be a split, um, in the subdivision of those, of the larger parcel into two parcels. So you can see how number one is going to take a portion. And so in order to clean things up and to have everything zoned the same, they are requesting that. See. That, that red portion be rezoned to A one.
Okay, thank you. Any questions?
So is the red portion in this picture actually zoned for R one eight right now?
Yes.
And we're just moving it to A one so that it matches the zoning of the way the subdivision will be plotted?
Exactly.
Okay.
Yeah.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you, Nancy. Uh, is the applicant here this evening? Go ahead and invite the applicant forward. You'll have fifteen minutes for your presentation. If we have any questions, we'll ask them at the end. Go ahead and invite the applicant forward. You'll have fifteen minutes for your presentation. If we have any questions, we'll ask them at the end.
Uh, Stephen Davis from Provo and Nancy covered it pretty good. We're just trying to conform with the north half to make it all agricultural and leave the south half as R one eight.
Okay, great. Any questions for the applicant? Okay, thank you very much. Oh, sorry, didn't see you, Lisa.
Can you tell me how you find to access parcel A? It looks like it'll be locked in. I guess eventually there'll be a lo- a road that comes in from six twenty north, or how how do you plan on accessing?
The north parcel?
The south parcel personally.
There's three access points into that area. Five twenty, uh, looks like on your map, two twenty four sixty. Do what?
Road stubs on the south, please, so.
Oh, I see it, I see it. Thank you. I see the stubs. I thought those were house lots and I couldn't figure out where the access was coming.
Three roads into the south portion.
Thank you.
Any other questions for the applicant? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Go ahead and open it for public comment at this time. Do we have any neighborhood or district chairs here tonight for this item? Okay, not seeing any, we'll open it to the general public. Uh, if you'd like to speak, please come forward at this time and you'll have two minutes to make your comment. Okay, not seeing any comments from the public, we'll close the public comment portion of the meeting and bring it back to the commission for discussion.
This is like the exact opposite of what we usually see, where someone wants to go to a single family. So I see this as completely harmless unless we were to interpret it as not meeting the general plan goals of um, single family homes in the area or something crazy like that. It's also preserving agriculture, so. I have no problem with it.
Agree.
I also agree.
Great, are we ready for a motion? Who would like to make a motion for us?
Can I take a stab in making my first motion?
Okay.
Okay, just to note, this is an administrative legislative, so we're not approving it, we're recommending an approval to or denial to the city council.
Thank you for that clarification. Uh, so I move that we recommend for approval. Uh, item number three on the agenda, Stephen Davis requests a zone map amendment from the R one point eight residential zone to the A one point one agricultural zone for the point seven one acres of land in order to process a two lot subdivision located at twenty five twenty five west, six twenty north, Lakeview South neighborhood.
A second.
Great, any discussion on the motion?
It was beautifully done.
Thank you. Okay, we'll go ahead and start voting on my left. Aye.
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 And I'll vote aye, so item three passes unanimously. Moving pretty good tonight. Let's go ahead to item four. Kendall Seymour requests a zone map amendment from the R one point six one family residential zone to the V L D R, very low density residential zone in order to create a flag lot subdivision located at ten fifty west, one hundred north in the Dixon neighborhood. Um, and Jessica will present that to us.
Thank you, Commissioner. Um, yes, so we have an application to rezone the property uh, to V L D R or very low density residential. Uh, just some brief context. This property is currently zoned R one six, uh, and it is in an area that allows for accessory dwelling units. Um, the home was built early nineteen hundreds, kind of to the front of the lot, as you can see, so there, that left a very long, narrow lot. Uh, hence why the applicant is trying to rezone for opportunities to use more of the lot. Um, here we have the aerial map just showing what it would look like with just that parcel being zoned V L D R in the surrounding area being still R one six and then to the south is our, one of our gateway zones. Uh, as mentioned in the staff report, the V L D R zone actually doesn't allow for a flag lot. So they would update their plat, um, so each home, it would be a condominium plat, each home would be privately owned. And then the landscaped area basically functioning as lawn would be common area. Uh, but the overall density increase would be an additional single family dwelling. Um, as mentioned in the staff report, since this area does allow for ADUs, the increase of one additional dwelling can be met through uh, an accessory apartment. Uh, which is why staff is recommending that the planning commission recommend denial. There is a typo on the staff report that says we say deny the variance, but you would be recommending denial to the city council. Uh, are there any questions?
Thank you. Any questions for staff? Yes.
So just wanna make sure I understand, so you're recommending denial because they can get to two units on the same property without this action?
Correct. Since the area allows for an accessory dwelling unit and that can be detached, they're able to create and do that increase of one additional dwelling unit um, without needing to do a rezone.
But they can't sell their ADU because.
That's the difference, yes.
So there is a pretty big diff- I mean, yes, it's a second ADU. So really the issue here, and we've seen these before, right, is the lot frontage dimension problem.
Correct.
And that's why this is maybe special, am I understanding that correctly?
Yep.
Can you or 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 Bill, help us understand more why that lot frontage is so important in the bigger scheme of things? Can you help me understand why we're so concerned about the width of the frontage and then that width of that? The pole of the flag lot, right? Can you help me understand that?
Right, um, the the frontage, really, it's it's set by code. That's kind of where we're, we're hitting our hard and fast number, is that an R one six requires a certain lot width as set by code. And they they don't have the ability to meet that, that's why they need the rezone. Um, as to the specific importance of why the the number for this zone. I I I don't have a a good answer for why we've gone with that specific sixty foot requirement for lot width and the thirty five foot requirement for for frontage. As far as drive access, uh, for flag lot situations, it's to ensure that emergency vehicles could get back there. It's to ensure that we have an access to the property in the rear, that there's a clear and easy way for them to get in and out in an emergency situation, some sort of vehicle to get to them.
So the rezoning does give that, right? Cause it maintains that, but it's a smaller frontage. Bill, can you help us understand why that's important in the code? I understand it's written, but what? So frontage requirements have a huge impact on the housing density you achieve in the zone. Uh, the frontage requirement has just as big of impact as the square footage requirement for that zone or line zone. Um, in this case, the city allows flag lots because there are goals in the general plan about trying to use land more wisely and better, so we opened a door to flag lots. The subtlety in this issue is though that the city council has really expressed their desire to increase or maintain homeownership. And if this becomes two independent lots, each can be rented. If this is a home with an ADU, there has to be owner occupancy on the property. And so that's why, another reason why the staff is taking the position we are. We're also trying to be consistent in how we handle these. This planning commission has seen some of these recently. And we're trying to be consistent with those that allow ADUs that we treat them the same. That's, thank you, that's important information. But I can see, I can also see from these aerial images that there are lots of lots around here that are I'll say super deep, right? They're they're abnormally deep for this neighborhood, which creates, for lack of a better term, kind of a junkyard effect because they become let's say inefficient, very difficult to maintain because they're so massive. So yes, an ADU is possible, but they're expensive. And I'm just wondering if this, if if staff has thought about how to help some of these very deep lots use their property a little more efficiently or maintain their property better, because they're kind of landlocked areas that are very difficult to deal with. Yeah, I think you raised a really good point in that very frequently in city planning, we have competing goals. And you can't always achieve all of them on every situation and you have to kind of pick and choose based on the area it's in, site situation characteristic, surrounding uses, a whole lot of different variables, what makes sense in the situation. You raised some really good points, Mr. Wheelwright, um, but that's just one um, interest the city would have, more efficient use of land and not having, you know, junkyards or or messy areas in the back versus other alternatives. Uh, you raised a good point. I can't say whether or not your point is more valid than other ones we've raised. So some of the planning commission needs to weigh through. So one follow up, if if we denied this, if we didn't recommend this, is there a possibility of some of these deeper lots? Lot adjusting their lot lines so that there's a new, some kind of larger subdivision potential in there, is that a? Yes, you're gonna, you're gonna see a subdivision proposal in the near future that takes five or six properties and uses more efficiently those deep lots from five or six lots to create more dwellings back behind them. So I think you're gonna see example of what you're alluding to. Whether or not you can do this in this case or every case, it's difficult, but yes, we try to achieve what you're describing. Thank you.
I I think maybe this is better for discussion because you're raising it right now. Some of the other things to consider are that it's, um, it's definitely spot zoning. It's one little property that gets special exception to the rule instead of using the rule that already enables them to achieve part of their goal. Another goal that's in the general plan and that the municipal council has is um, to encourage owner occupancy. And this is definitely a neighborhood that could benefit from that, instead of giving them two little properties that one of them's hidden behind out of sight, out of mind and no one cares about it. So like Mr. Pepperoni said, there's, there's good and bad alternatives and, you know, part of me says, oh, this is just give them what they want, it's the same thing either way, but the other part says, what precedent do you set for the next guy that comes along that is just gonna sell the properties and not care about them either, so.
Yeah.
And the the applicant is here with some presentation.
So let's hear from the applicant and then we can discuss this further after public comment. Any other questions for staff? Okay, awesome, thank you. Go ahead and invite the applicant forward, you'll have fifteen minutes for your presentation.
Hey, uh, we had some slides that we prepared. Oh, sorry, I'm Kendall Seymour, uh, I live in Provo.
And I'm Heather Shelley and I live in Provo.
Please speak right in the microphones because they're having trouble hearing us on YouTube. Thank you.
I'm Heather Shelley and I live in Provo.
I'm Kendall Seymour, I live in Provo. Um, you all brought up points that we've discussed before. Uh, there's one new one that you addressed about both of the properties maybe being rented in the future that I'll address as well, but it's not in the presentation itself. But you all brought up very good points that we've considered uh, in this request. Uh, so I'm Kendall, I have a master's in mechanical engineering and that was my trade uh, until I turned to home remodeling, uh, working with Heather. Um, Heather's a professional theater performer, a realtor and a UBU professor currently teaching uh, theater. Uh, the property was built in nineteen oh eight, uh, it's currently a four bed, one bath on seventeen sixty square feet on that deep point three acre lot. Um, we purchased it in a very condition, different condition than it's currently in and we remodeled the interior um, with intention to to sell.
I'm actually quite proud of it. We put a lot of work into it and really tried to make it something that people would be happy to live in. Um, so included some pictures here to show you what it looks like. Um, we put it on the market in May and without much interest, we kept dropping the price. And in the end, we have it like four fourteen. Um, and without this home on the market, the cheapest four bedroom, single family home that you can find in all of the city is four twenty five. So you can see that it's competitively priced. And I realize that that's not your issue, you're not concerned about trying to make things um, profitable for people like us. I understand that, but I think we all want to make it so that people can live in a reasonable priced home and we have really done our best to make it so that it's something that we can, you know, feasibly make work financially, that will also be something that's in someone's best interest. Um, and even though we had it on the market for a couple of months, we didn't have any reasonable offers. Um, so we have two options then. We can rent the home, which is where we're looking right now. Um, that's, it that looks like it's in our best interest right now because if we can't sell it for a profit right now, we can hold on to it until we can. So at that point, when the home prices go up, we can sell it, but on the other hand, it's going to cost more for whoever buys it at that point. And if we do that option, the back lot will stay the way it is. And Matt Wheelwright um, mentioned, I think your words were junkyard.
Junkyard effect.
Junkyard effect. Which I would say is fairly accurate for this property. Um, although we've made it a lot better, it still is the case, I believe, for the back lot. If we were to do this, there are no owner occupied units on the property. If we keep it as is, we'll just rent it. But if we can rezone it, then we have um, a couple of things that I think will be really beneficial for the city as a whole. Um, we can add a single family home. And it's true that we don't know who's gonna buy it. And we don't know if they'll own or if they'll rent, we don't know that, but it's possible that it could be an owner occupied home. And it will give us the ability to make the back lot, not a junkyard. And it will let us be able to make the front of the home, the existing home, more appealing for the neighborhood. And then we can sell it at an affordable, at a more affordable amount for uh, an owner to live there. So it can result in two owner occupied units if we can split it.
Um, you all know that the city recommends that we do a detached ADU or attached ADU. Um, this does allow for an additional, or it keeps it as an owner occupied unit and allows for additional residents without a rezone. Um, and I'll note for now that we've talked to a few people and for this age of a home, an attached ADU and a detached are roughly the same build cost because of what you need to do to fix the, you know, nineteen oh eight home to make that all work with sewers and everything. Um, so for us, a detached or attached ADU is a financial barrier. Um, we're looking at an estimate of around three hundred thousand to build that. Um, and with this financial planner I'm using, um, even accounting in an increase in the price of the home or the value of the property and an increase in rent, you know, at regular inflation rates, you're still losing money for seven years. Um, if you build this uh, detached or attached ADU, so it's not really an option for us. Um, and with the owner occupancy rules, which totally makes sense, um, anybody who purchases this home from us would also need these financial means to make an ADU work, um, and we don't see that as reasonable. Um, and we were volun- told voluntarily um, by Aaron that there were no detached ADUs approved in twenty twenty three. Maybe that's evidence that this is not financially workable for a lot of people uh, in Provo. And the city loan data that they gave us was from twenty twenty two and the loan prices are even much higher now than they were, so this is even less affordable than it used to be, um, when the city first wrote the AD recommendation to the general plan.
So just in case that was not totally clear, I think that the idea behind this was probably good back when interest rates were lower and home prices were lower, but I don't think that anybody's going to be able to get a loan to do that kind of ADU in this area at current interest rates.
And to respond about the, both of the properties being rented, um, we know from our own finances and trying, looking at rental comps in the area, if you were to build a property back there, it makes zero sense to try and rent it, you will not make money and you would, it will, it's not a, it doesn't make sense to have that as an investment property as a rental. Um, same for the front, um, we purchased it in a pretty bad condition from a hoarder and it maybe makes sense for us to hold on to it for a little bit, but I firmly believe that neither of them would be rented if they were purchased by an owner. So anyway, in the city general plan, um, there's considerations for the legislative body when considering a rezone. Um, and we believe that our rezone is a positive answer to all of these except for the last one. Um, but it does get us closer. That last bullet point mentions uh, having at least ten percent of the development um, affordable to those in the fifty to seventy nine percent AMI brackets. Um, we're not, it's not that affordable, um, but the reason allows us to make a little bit of profit and sell that front home, viewify it and sell it at a more affordable value or price in the future. So in conclusion, we think that breaking precedent here and allowing. So in conclusion, we think that breaking precedent here and allowing the rezone gets to our occupied units instead of one that will just be rented until we figure out other options. So, thank you for all listening and I guess instead of Q and A, that should say public comment.
Thank you. Please say if we have any questions for you. Any questions for the applicants?
I have a question. You said that, um, dividing this so that you have two homes on these, you know, a separate home on the other back parcel would be, make it more, the front home more appealing to the neighborhood. Tell me about that a little more.
We, we want to make it more appealing. So with, if we were able to sell the back lot, we would have funds to beautify the front of the home, which has been our goal throughout the, the process of renovating this home. We've cleared out a lot and planted a few things and, and done a lot of work to the, to the front property, but we'd like to make it, you know, better.
And I'd also like to say, if it's okay, that in reference to, um, Mr. Wheelwright's question about the frontage, if my memory serves me correctly, the required frontage for a typical lot of this uh, type would be seventy-five feet and ours is seventy-three and a half. So it's just shy by a little more than a foot. Uh, if that, that kind of, um, contributes to your issue of the overall density of the neighborhood.
Any other questions for the applicant? Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
We'll go ahead and.
I have another question for the city.
Okay.
Okay. You were, can you just explain to me one more time? You said that you would, they would have to put a duplex on this. Is that right?
No.
Okay.
No, yeah.
I understand.
Um, they would do what's called a condominium plot. Um, so each, it would be two single family dwellings. To detach single family dwellings, they would be privately owned. It would be the, the yard area that would all be common space, but it would still be two single family dwellings.
So there's enough space on that, where the existing home is, to have access to the back lot and have fire truck access, all of that. There's enough space there. Nothing has to be done to the existing home to meet those standards.
The rezone is what would have to be done to meet the, the lot frontage requirement.
Right. With the rezone, nothing else would have to be done. There's enough space there.
Yes, there wouldn't be any additional exceptions that would be needed.
Sorry, now, but now I'm confused, right? They came for a rezone, changing so that they have the frontage to make it work. But you're saying they could do a condo map and still get two separate units for sellable units?
The, the rezone is required, um, if they would just have to change their plot. A flag lot is not allowed in a V L D R zone. It's only allowed in the R one zone.
So they have to do the condo map adjustment to make this work?
Adjust the plot.
And, and first get the zone change, then the con- okay, thank you.
So if I can follow up on that, so, I mean, a condominium map like that, if I understand it correctly, means that they kind of both own the land underneath, but they both own the houses separately? Is that how it works?
Yeah, the, the landscape common area, the yard would be considered common area. The homes are privately.
So the two homes, even though owned separately, would have to coordinate on landscaping and work together on it.
Is, is there a reason they would have to do a condo plot versus just having like an access easement?
Um, it's just about what's allowed in the zones, the, the access easement, the flag lot. It's just the, the V L D R. The condo plot is what meets the code.
Thank you.
I, I guess I'm kinda have a hard, having a hard time understanding, like, you, the staff is okay with an ADU where, where one's owner occupied, one's rented out. But like the, the city, like the general plan and, and the goals to call for owner occupancy and a V L D R with, where their, their presentation said they would sell it as two properties, both owner occupied, well, maybe not necessarily owner occupied, but they would sell both of them. So it's, to me, it seems like there's some potential that they could both be owner occupied. So I I, I'm, I'm not, the, which seems to really meet the goal of, uh, the general plan.
I think the difference is that there's potential for them to be owner occupied, but with the ADU, there's a guarantee that at least one of them will be owner occupied. And I'm guessing that's where the staff leans towards that guarantee versus the potential.
I guess what I'm saying, if there was a, if there was a guarantee that both would be owner occupied, that, wouldn't that change the calculus of all that?
So I think we're, we're leaking into discussion, right? So let's finish.
I mean, wouldn't, I would to the, that's my question to staff is, if, if, if there was, if there was that, um, both, uh, owner occupied, would that, that uh, get staff approval?
Um, that is not something that we have discussed about. So I think we would, I would have to defer to Bill on that question to see how an ultimate answer would be.
I'm sorry, ask that again?
Yeah, so if, uh, it, it sounds like from their presentation that, that that they considered uh, putting the properties as both for sale, which would allow owner occupancy, but, and, and there's a concern that there isn't a guarantee that at least one of them isn't, but, um, so the question is if staff, uh, or if they were, if there was a guarantee that both would be owner occupied, does that change staff's mind about approving a V L D R?
I think that's certainly helpful and I think, given the city council's goals to increase for sale housing for owner occupancy, I think that would be meaningful to them. So that may be an issue that the city council wants to pursue with the owners when this gets to city council. The, the applicants raised some really good points about the economics of this. But I think the council would want to weigh in on the issue of owner occupancy.
Okay. Well, I, I guess, yeah, that, done with the question.
Okay, uh, Lisa has a question for Jessica.
So in your, um, first page summary of key issues, the third bullet point says rezoning to V L D R would only allow one additional single family dwelling. So no matter what, that's all that would be allowed there, right? So we're not opening a giant can of worms with an increased density beyond.
Correct, yeah.
Are the setbacks in the V L D R zones significantly different than the single family residential zones?
Uh, they're relatively similar.
So it's density wise, you can't really sprawl out more than you would expect with an ADU, for example?
No.
A detached ADU? Okay. Thanks.
Quick question, does, do you know, or, um, I can't remember, city engineer back there, how deep the sewer is in the street?
Uh, I do not know. That would be a question for David.
David, estimate on how deep the sewer is in front of this lot?
Uh, David Day said about nine feet.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, thank you. Let's go ahead and open the public comment portion. Do we have any neighborhood or district chairs here tonight? Okay, not seeing any. We'll open it up to general comment. Please come forward at this time. If you have a comment to make, you'll have two minutes to speak. Okay, not seeing any. We'll close comment, uh, public comment and bring it back to the commission for discussion.
I, I agree with you, Danielle, about the contradictions. I was thinking, um, it's, I know it's, there's like subtlety to it, but I feel like in areas where ADUs are in high demand and there's not the potential to make a separate dwelling, they deny the ADUs and then where there's a space where you could potentially make another dwelling, they say, no, you have to have an ADU. Um, and I think that that's, um, I do think that it favors those who already own property, which is really part of the problem of the housing crisis, like, um, favoring people who only like, you know, they already have, you know, equity or whatever and they can get a loan to do the ADU. Um, I do think that so normally, I would say normally I would be like, I think there should be an exception and I'm, I'm for densifying, especially in these neighborhoods. Um, I think that since we're going to more like the, what is it called in Title fourteen rewrite, uh, the zoning change, it's like, what's it called again? Where it's not, huh?
Form-based?
Form-based, yeah. And so like, quote unquote, spot zoning will happen more. This is kind of what is probably gonna happen and it's kind of the natural way that things build up. So I don't have a problem with that. But, um, the only thing is, I would say that I, I would prefer, given that I would normally say I think an exception should be made, I think that exception should be made for people who are living in their house and invested in the neighborhood rather than, um, just people flipping a house. So, for what it's worth.
Any other comments? I think for me, I'm quite torn on this one. Um, I would say, density wise, I feel like an ADU versus another lot back there is kind of sixes, right? Comes out the same. Um, so I, I, I get that the zoning has frontages, et cetera, to help try to control densities, but it just doesn't seem like it's gonna have an impact in this case. I guess my biggest concern remaining on the idea of splitting it is actually the condominium plot because when you have those, usually it's multiple units, you have a formal organization, right? They have funds, they have budget to maintain the common spaces. With just two people, I worry about how effective that's gonna be. Um, and how, you know, what happens when there's maintenance in the common area that needs to be done? And one says they wanna do it and the other one says, I don't wanna or I don't have the money, right? Like I just, that worries me. Whereas in ADU, you would have an owner occupied who would make those decisions straight up and spend those funds. So that feels cleaner on that side to me. On the other side, I've long felt that one of the big barriers of ADUs is, as they mentioned and showed very clearly, the economics of trying to make that work with the cost of building what it is right now. Um, whereas selling may help you recoup those costs more quickly. So I'm, I'm torn. I'm right in the middle on this one, cause I can see benefits to both directions.
Yeah, I, I agree with, sorry, I'm, um, I'm just jumping in. Um, I, I agree with staff's recommendation here. I, that, that it's denied, uh, but if, if there was there was a there was owner occupancy for both, that would change my, the calculus for me on.
Me too. And I was thinking that one of my big hangups is that it's just one property that's getting rezoned. And if it was several properties that wanted to do the same thing, it would feel like less of a knee jerk reaction and more of a community solution. Um, I did think it was interesting, if I can make a more extensive comment. When I was reading through, um, the code analysis on page two and three of the staff report, I noticed that every single one of the staff responses was actually positive.
I noticed that too.
And I thought, wait a second, none of these findings are negative. So if they don't contradict the general plan goals, then why are we recommending denial? And so I did find that very interesting that eh, according to the report, it actually goes with the general plan, which is what we're supposed to measure against for a zone change request. Um, I still lean towards the staff recommendation because I believe that if there's already a solution on the ground, if it isn't broken, don't fix it. But I think what we're talking about is that maybe it is broken and there's a better solution, but I'm with Jonathan. I'm I'm leaning towards recommending denial, just because that's the simpler option. But I feel like what they're asking for also supports the goals of the city. Aside from not being pretty on a map.
Well, I think you need to decide what goals of the city, like, like Mr. Pepperoni was saying, there are competing goals, right? And so in my opinion, this should be a principle based decision. Um, it's really compelling and it feels sad that people might invest in something and think they're gonna make money back and lose it and this is so expensive. That should not be the basis of our decisions. And I feel like spot zoning is not a good idea. I do feel like when you said, if we do this, if, if there are more people that wanted to do this, it felt more like a community. Well, the opposite side of that coin is also true. If you do it once, then you're gonna have other people that come and say, oh, actually us too. Yeah, we'd like to do the same thing. We'd like to do the same thing. Now you've lost your single family neighborhood. Does that make sense?
Well, I mean, you're talking about the ADU or?
I'm talking about rezoning. If you rezone, so at some point, we have to decide how much do we wanna protect single family neighborhoods?
I mean, but would.
This would be two single family homes, so it's just adding each other.
But it increases the density and then other properties will wanna do the same. Now, what I thought was really compelling is that if five or six of these deep lots wanna get together and make some reasonable normal, single family dwelling units together, right? Create a new subdivision there. Great, that's a solution. But if you spot zone like this, you take away that opportunity for some of these other lots to get involved too. Does that make sense?
I, I don't know that.
And keep the single family neighborhood quality instead of, instead of increasing the density without owner occupancy. I don't know any way to ensure owner occupancy on these sorts of units. Is that possible?
Yeah, the city council's been addressing that with, um, applicants, um, through deed restrictions that do give the city some guarantees.
Yeah, I, I feel like single family large lots and single family higher density isn't, like, it's still single family. And so I, I just, like, the premise that it's losing a single family, maybe if, yeah, it's like densified from single family to, you know, apartments or something, but it's adding more single family homes in this case. And that's what the next intensity of development would be and that's kind of like a natural thing to happen. So anyway, I, as you know, I don't have a problem with that.
I mean, let's take for example, just a hypothetical, like, you know, you have a, a third acre lot with a, let's say a twenty-four hundred square foot home and it's a family of six. Now these parents have like, they're in their fifties, they're empty nesters, all the kids have moved out. But it's a big enough lot where they could could, um, do an ADU or, or subdivide or not, rezone the lot to a V L D R. I mean, the does it change the density? Yeah, like on a, a land use, uh, you know, geography and, and measurement thing, it totally does. Um, does it change like the, the number of occupants? Maybe not. Um, if they're, you know, uh, uh, an empty nester is still a family even with their, without kids.
Right.
And, and a, a single person's a family even without kids. Um, I, I, I get that it changes the density and, 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 and I guess the big part is really what we're saying. Um, neighbors' expectations of the, the character of the, the neighborhood being low density, right? But if, if it's ownership on the table, uh, that that is a factor that moves the needle for me. I think based on it right now, with ownership not being on the table, um, or, or no guarantees of that, I, I would probably, um, I don't know, if you were to pull me, I'd say deny.
The other thing I think was very compelling was what Jonathan said about the maintenance with the condominium plot. There's a property close by my house where the maintenance of a section of the property is everyone's responsibility. And so it just doesn't get maintained, cause nobody wants to be the one that has to do it. And, and so that is a very real negative to that sort of land arrangement where you're trying to improve the look of a neighborhood and the feel of the neighborhood by somebody doing, investing in it and making it look nice and then having it backfire because of the way it had to be plotted.
And with just two owners, it could be adversarial pretty easily, rather than having, say, five or whatever. I agree with that part. Um, but yeah, I, I think this reveals maybe some things that there are opportunities to address in the future about what flag lots. What, I don't know, like maybe there are areas where we could fill these gaps and stuff, but, um, I do think that if we prioritize ownership, the lots will have to be smaller. Like that's all, there's, I mean, at least some of the lots, not all of them. We don't have to cut every single, you know, R one eight, R one ten lot down. And not all of them will be cut down, but we have to allow them somewhere because otherwise we're saying, we don't want people to own homes.
Yeah, I agree. I think with two people can become very adversarial, right? And I feel bad because it might actually be a financial hardship on one of them, et cetera. When you have a true apartment condominium, for example, there's a fee you pay every month and there's a board that decides, right? Like it, it gets taken care of, but I don't think it would in this case.
What if we, um, were What if we um were to, say, we make a motion to recommend denial and then make a list of the things that would, are preventing us from approving, recommending approval?
I was thinking the same. And the way I thought I would do it, even though I think this is a little non-traditional, is maybe some straw polls after the vote. So that they're given in the context of your vote, um, indicating, you know, this may have changed my vote, kind of thing, if this was met.
I would say before, like, is, is anyone, is anyone right now want to make a motion to approve?
To recommend approval?
Or recommend approval for item four? I see four nods and verbally at least three more. So I'm guessing, like, I'm, I'm, it sounds like there's consensus to, that nobody wants to recommend.
So what if we just made a list of the things that we all, maybe a straw poll individually on what the majority of us feel are things that we would like the city council to consider? As they, as they approve or deny our approval or deny.
Before we do that, let's hear Matthew's comments here.
Yes, just a couple of thoughts, one that are rattling around. One is, I think our condo conversation, condo map, there are a million ways for a good real estate attorney to write a condo agreement to solve everything you're concerned about. I have zero concern that they could figure it out. They might not figure it out, but there are lots of ways to write it that aren't this kind of shared maintenance problem that we're kind of feeling. Um, flag lots are a problem generally. Um, not, I have no problem with an ADU, with, with this being a lot generally. I have a serious problem with spot zoning. Density never frightens me, but it has to be wise. And we have a lot of these conditions across the city. I think the staff, the, and maybe with us, like Lisa, you're saying, and with the plan, or the city council, needs to give something to make this process a little simpler and more structured. So we don't get pushed into spot zoning. Flag lots don't sell well. It's not the same as having a single family home on the sidewalk. People don't, you're not going to ever see those people. You will never, there's a social dysfunction if you had a lot of these. So I would love to see somehow, I don't know how we do this, encourage these five neighbors who have the same condition to make it easy on them, to assemble them and go, huh, we didn't have to rezone anything, and we got six new lots. Or something, I, I think there's something future here. I don't think we're sold, I'm not inclined to spot zone this in this way personally. Um, but I, I think it's a good idea.
I'm really curious about your plan because I was seeing that there's a lot of that kind of dead zone in the middle. Would it be as simple, do you think, if the city, like, giving some examples of how it might look? And instructing them on how to do it, you know what I mean? Just in, information maybe is just all it would take. And then someone comes and they say, hey, here's this alternative, go talk to your neighbors, and they feel like they, they know how to do it.
I think there's enough of this in certain pockets, I think. If you were to take an aerial across the city and somebody were to study or student, right, or to study this, you would see a lot of these, I mean, it happens in the tree streets just as much, right? Old, there used to be somebody's orchard and they've now become landlocked as they've sold off to probably at some point in the past, kids and grandkids and things like that. And now they have this funky, big center section that nobody quite knows what to deal with. Well, in this condition, looking at the aerial, oh, I can see exactly what you would do with that. It's actually not that difficult. But you have to get all the property owners to agree and to talk and come up with a financial plan that actually works. But I think the city can make that process easier. I think the state legislature is actually pushing cities very strongly to make some of these things easier.
That way you haven't done spot zoning, you haven't lost the single family neighborhood character, which is a lower density, which people expect. People can have those homes in, infilled there. I think that's good use, better use of the land, rather than allowing one property which would then deny those others. Then you have to do the same thing to those others.
Kind of boxes them out.
Now you're going to slowly domino, lose the entire R one neighborhood.
That's a really compelling argument, I think, because it's like a little now or a lot later. Um, so, good job you convinced me on that point.
I wrote down three main concerns I've heard us say more than once.
Oh, I'll just, I don't want to impede anyone's ability to like buy a flag lot. Like, I, I think if someone wants to buy one, they should be able to buy one. My only reason I wouldn't buy one is because I don't like tiling snow in the winter.
That's the reason he lives on the north side of the street. South facing driveway.
South facing, um, all the way. Um, but yeah, anyways.
I have one too. Okay, here's the three things that I've heard us say that we're not okay with spot zoning, that we're concerned about condominium plat and the problems or solutions that brings. And that um, we want to encourage owner occupancy.
Yes.
And that we feel there's a better way for infill without rezoning.
A more complete way for infill.
Right. Capture all of those properties rather than just one.
Let's say, I actually think the current zoning would even allow for the level of density that we're talking about. I think R one point six on a point three acre lot allows to six thousand foot square foot uh, properties. The issue is the flag lot and getting the frontage. I think that's the only reason that the rezone is needed. So I think that whole little center pocket is already capable of achieving that density. If someone's able to get all the property owners on, on the same page to sell and subdivide.
Think of what that could do for that neighborhood, turn it into a cute little enclave.
Okay, so how do we word those into straw polls?
Maybe just see if more than half of us have concerns with those four, and then we put them on a list with the motion.
So I guess, I guess I'll word it as, how many say that concerns about spot zoning is a major concern for you? Okay?
That's four.
Four? Okay, I actually, I'll add me there, so that's five.
Okay.
And then, um, how many are concerned about a condominium plat and potential issues that may raise on a two person lot? Put me there, that's.
Four.
Four? Did you raise your hand, Joel? No, okay, so four. On that one, uh, how many think that the lack of guarantee of owner occupancy is a major concern for them? I see four on that one. What we're going to lose is it's not always the same four, but we can note that. Um, and how many think that there are better infill options that this may actually hinder in the future? I'll put myself there. So six of the seven? Okay, so with that, are, do we feel ready for a motion?
Well, I'm curious if, if it hinders options in the future, um, that would be a spot zoning, right? Planning a, a VLDR in the middle of.
No, because we wouldn't have to. It could, it could happen with the current zoning is what Joel was saying.
Okay.
Yeah, I think you would just need all the property owners to agree to sell and create a new plat. Or create a new subdivision.
I'm just gonna, I'll stay.
Okay, so uh, who wants to make a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Okay.
Um, I move that we forward a recommendation to deny this item to the municipal council. Kendall Seymour requests a zone map amendment from the R one six zone to the VLDR zone in order to create a flag lot subdivision located at ten fifty west one hundred north in the Dixon neighborhood. With the additional information for the municipal council that our main concerns for this recommendation of denial are the spot zoning, the condominium plat problems, um, owner occupancy guarantees, and that we think there's better infill options.
Without rezoning.
Without rezoning, thank you.
I'll second that.
Thank you. Any discussion on the motion before we vote? Just a reminder, a vote of yes is a vote.
To deny.
To recommend.
To recommend denial, right? Okay.
Aye.
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 And I'll vote aye, so the recommendation to deny passes unanimously. Okay, let's go to our last item tonight. Item five, Christina Gibson requests an ordinance text amendment to Provo City Code fourteen point thirty point twenty in order to allow an accessory dwelling unit on property in the R one ten, one family residential zone located at thirty eighty North Bannock Drive.
Thank you. Um, yes, so here we have the aerial view of the property to give some context. Uh, the R one ten zone does not allow for accessory apartments. Uh, this ordinance text amendment only applies to this specific property. Um, and if the ordinance text amendment is approved, that means that going forward, any future owner could also have an accessory apartment, provided they meet all of the code requirements in fourteen thirty. Um, so in fourteen thirty, we have a section for a special use permit that's allowing you to do this ordinance text amendment to amend the map that you see here, so that your property, wherever it is in the city, is included on this map. So that's the ordinance text amendment that is before you for the property at thirty eighty to be included on that map. Um, part of the special use permit process is to obtain the signatures of surrounding property owners. Uh, the code gives a specific definition for which properties count as surrounding property owners. The image, those properties with the green Xs on them are the properties that provided a signature saying they would be in favor of the accessory apartment at the property. Code requires that you get sixty six percent approval. Uh, they have five that brought them to seventy one percent approval. The main concern that comes up with this is the requirements in code for the property to be owner occupied before an accessory dwelling unit can be established. Um, so code says that it must be occupied by an owner occupant, which the applicant Christina Gibson meets the definitions of an owner occupant for subsection A. Um, she is an individual who possesses fifty percent or more ownership and occupies the dwelling with the intent to make it her primary residence. Uh, the concern comes in subsection D, where it states that any person who meets the requirements of subsection A, B, or C, but is not the only owner on title cannot be considered an owner occupant. Uh, now, this owner occupant definition is very involved. Um, D has an additional subsection that says a person who claims to be an owner of the dwelling unit but does not occupy it, uh, can provide this documentation. Uh, staff's concerns here are that the language of subsection II doesn't clearly state that it is overriding the principle of subsection D, where it says all owners must live on title to be deemed an owner occupant. Um, but it seems like the intent is to provide an exception. Um, the additional concern is even if we take subsection II as an exception, so that not all owners need to live on title at the property. Um, William Gibson, who is also on title, cannot yet provide all of the required documentation as they have not owned the property long enough to provide any tax documentation that they have not claimed any deduction or depreciation on tax returns. Um, so with this situation, staff is recommending that the planning commission recommend denial of the ordinance text amendment uh, on the provision that the current ownership situation does not meet the requirements for an accessory dwelling unit to actually be established. Any questions?
I, I have a question. Can you make that clear again? That you said if an exception is made, it stays with the property. If the owners sell the property, the exception stays with it.
Yes, an ordinance text amendment, it's getting put on the map. It's getting put as part of code that this property allows an accessory dwelling unit going forward.
But any licensed landlord would follow whatever the current rules are at that time.
Yes, so-
So it's not like we're grandfathering in some weird variance.
Yes, well, what you would be granting is saying this is in an area that allows it. And each subsequent property owner would have to show that they can meet the requirements to establish it.
Okay, Lisa?
Um, couldn't the father just remove his name from the title and solve the problem?
Um, as long as Christina ends up being the sole owner on title, yeah, that would, that would resolve.
Okay.
The concern.
I also have a question about um fourteen point oh six point oh two oh subsection capital B I I. It says that they own occupant occupies the dwelling unit owned by the family trust with a bona fide intent to make it his or her primary residence. How do you measure bona fide intent? How does that legal language protect the city or the owner i- in that definition?
Um, with cases like that, since we allow individuals who purchase properties to establish an accessory dwelling unit, um, basically, once the property is in their name, it's, it's usually that we'll ask for documentation after a year showing that they've updated, you know, they're, they're living there, that it's a driver's license out, we'll ask for some sort of documentation.
So it basi- it basically just gives you permission to ask for that because you need to assess whether there's bona fide intent?
Yeah, we can require documents to show that it has become their primary residence.
Okay.
I have a question. Is this, sorry, is this, um, it's this way, it's a text amendment because they changed it so you can't get the conditional use permit with sixty percent in the administrative hearing, is that, am I remembering this correctly?
Correct.
Okay, so city council made it so that you couldn't get this with just a conditional use, not a text amendment. So now it has to be forever and not just temporary.
So, uh, accessory apartment section of code, I'm sure most of you are aware, is a hot button issue with the, the city council and they review it frequently. Um, previously, there was an administrative process uh, that was not as permanent as an ordinance text amendment. Um, it's, it was very similar in the documents that it required signatures um, of the surrounding neighbors. But city council amended the code, that option was taken away. Uh, so now we have the ordinance text amendment as the path forward. Um, the only other option would be to rezone, uh, which we just had a discussion about rezoning a single property, so we know that there's some strong feelings there. Thank you.
Matthew first and then Joel.
So just to make sure I'm clear, so if, I think I'm reading the right one, has, if, uh, I think it's the dad who doesn't live on the property, has not claimed any income tax deduction or depreciation of the property and the person's tax returns for the previous year. If we were having the same conversation three years from now, and they presented that information to say we had never taken a deduction or a, uh, a depreciation for the property, we would be saying yes. The staff recommendation would be yes. Is that, do I interpret that correctly?
Um, that seems to be the intent of that subsection is to, to create an ex- an exemption.
And-
When there's multiple owners on title.
Okay, and it looks to me like we're saying, the staff recommendation is because it's been less than a year, they don't have the history to prove that.
Yeah, they, they currently can't provide all of the documents listed there.
Except I would also say, based on my understanding of tax law, it also means they can't have taken a tax deduction in the previous year because they didn't own it in the previous year.
I guess that is a very valid point, yeah, they didn't own it.
Right, we're saying they need to have some longevity, but by, I think by law, they, they couldn't have taken it. So they can't prove it, but they couldn't have done it. Does that make sense?
Right. Neither owner has had the property long enough to provide any tax documents in their name with regards to this specific property.
But if they could, we would probab- we would be saying, your recommendation would be approved.
That is, and that's how our, our zoning administrator has, has felt that this subsection applies.
Okay.
Can, can I ask, is there any implication to a future owner? If we say, okay, we're going to make an exception, and since they're, although they're not meeting all of these requirements, we're going to say, okay, we're going to go ahead and let them do this anyway. Let's say then they sell the property in two years. Can the new owner come and say, well, you didn't make them comply with those things? And so we don't want to have to comply to that either. Does that make sense? Does that set a precedent?
Yes, anything that you're going to do here as a recommendation would, would set a precedent that a, a new owner could come in and say, there is a history that this has happened.
Would, would a new owner even have to prove anything? Because if it's now by right on a map, if this were approved, they could just have the ADU.
They wouldn't have to do a text amendment, but they would have to submit the rental license to get the accessory apartment approved.
Which would require them to show that one owner and that they live there, okay.
So, so that's my question. Uh, the ordinance text amendment um, is not allowing by right because they still have to submit- So that's my question. Uh, the ordinance text amendment um, is not allowing by right because they still have to submit an application for the ADU, right?
Yes, the ordinance text amendment is solely to get the property included.
Into that map.
Onto the, onto that map. And then the approval of the actual accessory apartment comes through the licensing process.
The the way I see it, where um, the ordinance amendment is just allowing an ADU there. And then they still have to prove owner occupancy down the road at whatever stage, whether it's a year from now, five months from now. Um, so to me, it's actually two separate processes.
Although why would the city deny, want it denied now?
What's that?
Why would the city want to deny it now then? Why would the city recommend denial now?
It's a good question for the city.
I think in this instance, because the current owners can't, um, they can't meet the requirements to establish the ADU. We don't want to set the precedent of approving an ordinance text amendment that allows an ADU in an area where it hasn't previously been allowed when the owners can't currently meet the requirement to have it.
So is no one able to get an ADU if they purchased a home within the last year? Is that?
No, there are.
Generally.
There in pretty much everything west of I fifteen is currently zoned to allow for ADUs. You can just, you don't have to do an ordinance text amendment. The areas in dark gray, they allow it outright. So someone who purchases it, um, they can establish it. If we get complaints from neighbors or or somehow informed that an owner does not live there, it's not being used as their primary residence, then we'll come back in through enforcement and say, please provide documentation that you're still using this property legally um, by code as you signed an agreement to do so.
I think the key is that this one has an owner who is not living there, who now needs to show from tax forms that they're not taking deductions, et cetera. And so that's that's a tricky situation that doesn't usually apply, right? You just buy a home, you move in, you show that you've established residence there and you can go.
Yeah, if it was just the one owner, they wouldn't even have to be talking about these proof, proof of tax documents.
But do do most people have just one owner on a home title?
Well, if it was my husband and I, we would hopefully both be living there, so this is a special
It's because one's not living there, that's what.
Signed it and one doesn't live there.
It's to help prevent sham transactions where people buy a home, put a child in it and say, well, they own it.
Yeah.
And they don't own it, and they put a bunch of students in with them, right? So you see how the city is trying to guard against some of the abuses that occur.
Matthew.
Do we have numbers on how many ADUs we've seen this year, last year? Do we have those numbers?
In general, or with regards to the ordinance text amendment.
Uh, in general, like how many new ADUs have been introduced into Provo in the last few years? It's been a hot topic. We've been talking about, if it's close to zero, which my guess is it probably is, then we're not helping the process by making it so difficult.
Um, we do have access to run those reports. I, in preparation for this meeting, I did not run a report to see how many ADUs have been approved between twenty twenty-three and twenty twenty-five. Um, but that is something that we do keep track of and that gets presented to council pretty regularly.
It it has been presented to us before, and I want to say it's very small.
It's low.
But I would like to point out, that's because there's probably three hundred that have happened this year, but they didn't go through the legal process. So it's not that there aren't ADUs in the city, it's that nobody's going through the process. So I appreciate that these people are going through the process. I would be inclined to do similar to what we did with the last one that says, we really want you to approve this, but because of the the language in the ordinance, we're going to recommend denial, but city council, we think there's a problem here and it's in your hands to fix it and decide accordingly.
So yeah, let's bring that back up during discussion.
I think it it does point out that, oh, sorry, this discussion.
Yeah.
Sorry, I jumped ahead.
Any other questions for staff? Okay, thank you, Jessica. Um, is the applicant here tonight? Please come forward. You'll have fifteen minutes for your presentation. Um, and if you have any questions, we'll ask them after you finish.
My name is Christina Gibson and I live in Provo.
I'm William Gibson. I'm her father. I live in Rona Park, California.
Thank you for allowing us the time to come and present. This house is a long-term investment for me. My dad made it financially possible for me to buy this house with um, the idea that my new husband and I would live in the basement apartment and we would rent out the main unit to help pay for mortgage. When our family does grow, we would live up in the main area and we plan to live there for the foreseeable future. If circumstances require that we move, we would either rent the house as one unit or sell it. We have no intention of using it as short-term housing or student rentals. When we bought the house, we had made sure that it was legal to have an ADU. However, when we were in escrow, zoning laws changed and we have tried everything to make it legal in good faith and we got the signatures for the neighbors around us and we're trying to make sure this house is good for the neighborhood that we live in. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Any questions for the applicant? Yeah.
Please. So when did you buy this home? How long have you already been there?
We bought it back in January.
Okay, so just this year, right?
Yeah, we were, we were, went into escrow in December when city council made the change. So when we were looking into it, you know, all we had to do is the house itself, it complies with all the requirements for ADU. So that's what we looked for when we bought it and we looked into it before, saw the requirements. And then bought it and then started the process and surprise, city council in the meantime while we were in escrow said, oh, yeah, you can't just meet the requirements. You have to go through this text amendment. What Jessica didn't say was besides the tax, they list the tax, the utilities, um, all these other documentations that prove that you're the owner, that we did submit. The only thing that we didn't submit was the taxes because we bought it in January, right?
Can can I ask, who's living in the home currently?
Um, currently, we're renting the main unit to a family and then my husband and I live in the basement.
Any other questions? So I guess my question is, knowing that the staff has concerns about proving owner occupancy kind of thing, why bring this forward now and not wait until next year when you can when you can make those assurances? When you have the tax documents, basically.
Well, we, right now, with her living in the basement and renting out the main unit.
It's to bring it into conformity.
Yeah, we wanted to bring into conformity because technically it's not kosher and so we're trying to do everything by the book, so it's all above board. And so that's why right away we started the process and it's taken a few months to get to this point. Um, I, as part of this, I talked to Catrice McKay and explained the situation and she said she would be inclined to approve something like this. That's not like a corporation trying to get a bunch of student housing in, but it's a young person trying to buy a house, figuring out a way to do it. It's not conventional, but fits what she can afford, that she can move into as her family grows and not have to like find a bigger place or, you know, she's got her place. She can move in, expand within the house, so. And and I think that's kind of in line with what the city would like to see in ADUs and things like that.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions for the applicant?
Is there any other way that you can get that in your name so that you're the sole owner of that property?
She needed my help to qualify, so the mortgage is in both of our names, sorry. It's in both of our names and so um, the bank wouldn't want to take me off because I'm the main qualifier on the mortgage, so.
Okay.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, thank you very much. Okay, so I guess we'll open it to public comment. Um, are there any uh, neighborhood or district chairs present? Please come forward. You'll have three minutes for your comment and so will you after her?
I am representing the district. My name is Rhoda Gothan. I live in Indian Hills, so Provo residence. Um, I represent the Indian Hills neighborhood and our co-chair asked me to represent our our committee today. We met on July seventeenth, we reviewed what was going on um, in in the application, the letter that was written by the applicant. And after some debate, and I must say we've been pretty anti-ADU as a general concept in the district. Um, but after debate and looking at the situation, particularly the neighbors accepting um, what was going on in the neighborhood, we agreed twenty-four to five that we would support this application. Now, we know that has no actual weight. It's not a vote vote. Um, but we certainly do in endorse it. Um, as an individual, just a neighborhood uh, person, um, I know people in my neighborhood who are renting accessory dwelling units that do do not have approval. I don't even know if they have uh, rental licenses and they're renting them. They might live there in the home, but they're renting them without following all the steps. They get away with that when somebody who is following the steps, trying to be compliant, trying to be a home neighbor, a a a homeowner in a neighborhood where if I hadn't bought thirty years ago, I would be able to afford, but doing all the right things, getting her dad to help her. It seems like it's penalizing her to take away her opportunity to to get some income in, to be able to be a homeowner and grow her family and become the homeowner.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Please come forward.
Where are you standing, Bible?
Oh, I was told you wanted someone to repeat in case it gets angry in your sharing.
Yeah, I have hearing aids and your hearing device did not work for me. Uh, my name is Lee Farthru. I live right at the top. I lived on the corner of Bannock and Apache Lane for sixty years. During that sixty years, I have been neighborhood chairman. I have been chairman of the Indian Hills Restrictive Covenants, both of which uh, are intended to protect the the single-family dwelling that is in the Arbonzo. I noticed on that map that said areas allowing ADU. I did not see Indian Hills on that map. It was up on the screen. And I got, to my knowledge, no one in Indian Hills has ever applied for one. If you look at that house where these people live, right directly across, for most of the years I've lived there, the people have had two students living in their house. Usually a married couple, right directly across from this place. And there are other places around because the Arbonzo allows two unrelated people. The only thing you add by doing this is add one more person. But it sets then a pattern for the whole neighborhood. And that's what we're afraid of. So I, I have not only represented them on those two committees, I have been their school board member, I have been their state representative. My entire sixty years has been devoted to that neighborhood and making it safe and for the intent of the original subdividers. I have a copy of the thing and one of the most important things they wanted to do was preserve the single-family dwelling concept and the Arbonzo concept. And I hope that you will do it. I appreciate your service. And I've been in the military and people keep saying, I appreciate your service. And I say, I appreciate you helping me get a PhD so I can teach at BYU.
Thank you. Okay, uh, we'll now open it to the general public. Uh, you'll have two minutes to make your comment.
My na- my name is Pam Jones. Uh, I live in Provo, just about three blocks from the house in question. I've lived there for thirty-five years and before that I lived on Cherokee Lane. My parents used to own a a house there. Uh, but any, anyway, um, I drive on Bannock a couple of times a month. And it's scary. It's a very steep street. It's shaped with curve on both ends. And uh, I'm concerned about parking. Uh, even though a certain number of parking spaces have been planned for this house. You know that visitors come and go and delivery trucks and mail and everything else. And it's a very difficult street to uh, to navigate, especially in the winter when it's icy. Um, I applaud the young lady and her father for trying to make the investment. Uh, I just say, not on Bannock.
Thank you.
Okay, sorry, I know this is a little uh, out of order, but I forgot that I included a slide of phone calls that I got today from the public about neighborhood input and also had that information from the district meeting. Um, so I did receive two phone calls just concerned about the occupancy and wanting it to stay a single-family home, and I wanted to make sure those comments were heard. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, Brittany Thorley, um, Provo resident and one of the signatories um, on the application. Um, I just wanted to, I guess, just reiterate that I, we are next door and um, we have seen what it looks like to live next to this house as an ADU and it has been not problematic and they have been good neighbors um, and good stewards and so um, take that for what it's worth. Um, when they came to us in January or whenever it was, um, we, I guess I would say, um, I agree a little bit with the comments that Pam made, um, that Bannock is not ideal for an ADU situation because of the on-street parking being a problem, but um, this just felt like a situation where it was being done in the right way and the for more history, the previous sellers had a very difficult time selling um, and needed to sell, and then these buyers came along and were only able to do so because they could finance it anyway. When they came to us and asked for our signature, we felt that um, this felt like a situation to take exception and to to give our consent. Um, two comments I want to make very briefly. One, process-related, um, the form that we signed, I'll just point out, it says if granted, this permit would allow an accessory dwelling unit on the property located at blank, owned by blank. We sort of were under the impression that implied um, it was property or owner-specific. And that's not, and so that's just a comment that maybe the city can improve the process a little bit. The second comment is just related to the on-street parking and and it is, it's very narrow, it's a it's a connector road, um, there's a lot of traffic, there is no sidewalk at all. Um, and so anytime a car is parked on the side, pedestrians need to go into the lane of traffic. Um, what I would say is, I would actually love for this to be an opportunity to for the city to look at solutions to the pedestrian problem, not necessarily crack down on potential ADUs. I think there are solutions, sidewalk on one side, parking on one side. I don't know, I don't know the realm of possibilities, but I would say that that's maybe the direction that this should be taken instead of the other. Thank you.
Thank you.
Jennifer Knapp, and um, I live around the corner and I am also one of the first ones that did what was back then called the A-one overlay zone in Provo. I lived in southeastern Provo. Um, and I was in the exact same situation thirty-three years ago when we bought our first house. Um, my husband was in school and um, I was doing some school too. We could not afford the whole home by ourselves. Um, but there was an opportunity to buy a home and start our family in that home, but we didn't need the whole home. So we had the basement apartment and we went through all the procedures too with the city. Um, and it was a blessing. It was a huge blessing to our family. Um, when we did this, we had no children. By the time we left that home, we had nine children in that home. By the time we left that home, we had nine children in that home. We provided all the off-street parking. And then when we sold the house, after living there for twenty years, we didn't know who bought it, but they bought it and now it is rental with cars everywhere. So that was our dilemma too, was if we didn't get the, what was the overlay zone then, we would have had to sell our house or we could have been absentee landlords, which was what was up the street from us, was an awful rental home with the landlord totally, the owner totally out of state, nothing. So I am for this, I drive up and down Bannock every day. The parking is an issue, but that's a city, more of a city issue with that, that's not who's living there. Everyone's been pretty good to keep off the street as much as they can, it's just a narrow street. So I am all in favor of this, it has made a huge impact in my life to be able to have that overlay zone. And I hope someday when I'm older, if I need the overlay zone, that can be a possibility too. So thank you.
Thank you.
Adam Shin, resident of Provo, living District One. I just want to share a couple of thoughts that came to mind to me as I was, I was hearing the comments and and the discussion about this. I think that for a lot of reasons, this is a really good example of what, what an ADU policy is, should be meant to enable, you know? A young family looking to make their start in a neighborhood that historically has had, you know, young families living through their lifecycle and aging and turning over. I think that it would be a... Yeah, it's, you know, this is the kind of thing that we talk about wanting to enable opportunities for homeownership. We want, we talk about wanting to enable, you know, affordable, accessible housing options. And this is a simple way that we, that would satisfy that. Change, change happens in neighborhoods and ADUs are one of the simplest and most incremental and gradual ways to allow that kind of change to happen. I think if you're looking at Indian Hills and the street names should be a salient reminder that land use has changed in the past, you know? Before it was a subdivision, it was something else, it was, it was, it was empty, you know? And cities go through those stages of change in land use. I think there was, there was one of the concerns about this was, was if being able to enforce and ensure this will be owner-occupied in the long term based on the ownership status of the home. And to me, it feels like that that's kind of, in a way, it's like we're putting a chilling effect on ADUs overall because of concerns about enforcement, right? Which really are administrative questions and not like zoning specific in the context of purely a zoning decision. So I, you know, and I've had some conversations recently with some friends about ways that we could do better at enforcing on those ADU requirements, you know, and preventing those kinds of sham transactions. One thought that came to mind was like simply asking the owner to retain ownership and not change the ownership for a certain amount of time after they apply for an ADU rental license, you know? I, this would be beyond the scope of this exactly, but just wanted to put that in your ear and give you food for thought. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Okay, not seeing any, we'll close public comment and bring it back to the commission for discussion.
I just want to say, I just reviewed the city council meeting where they took away the ability to do this administratively. And a lot of the arguments that are now being made in support of this particular person were made by the people who wanted to keep this method, the ADU method that was much less onerous for people trying to get them legally. So I feel a little bit kind of frustrated that I'm pretty sure it was a pretty close vote if you review that city council meeting. And I wish that they hadn't changed it, especially in the middle of your escrow, because that's ridiculous. I mean, a lot, one argument a lot of people said was, this is what we bought into, this is what we bought into. You bought into something that had an ADU until they changed it. So it goes both ways, and I just want to point that out. I do think that it's good to try and get the sham transactions taken care of, but I think we should look at these cases and see if this is like just too, too much. I don't know, like what, what can they do? How can they prove they are living there? I don't know, anyway, I don't know if there's something we can do, but I guess in the context of our issues around ADUs and the huge resistance in this part of Provo against ADUs, and whenever, I mean, I feel like a lot of us came and we wanted to support the ADUs happening with permission from the neighbors. I mean, it's not like you're just letting them do it wherever and we were out, but you know, the city council did not do that. So I just want to point out that I feel like this is a bigger issue than what we're going to decide here, for sure. And so it's really important to remember that because this is really, first of all, we're not deciding anything, we're just recommending, I think, to the city council. And they're the ones who ultimately have the power to, to say something about it. The other thing is, I, I wish that we had kept that for a big reason and that's fairness. I don't think you should have to go talk to your city council person, they can do you a favor. I think everybody should be treated the same. I don't think it should depend on the favoritism, that, that is something that I think is unfair. And so I think that needs to be addressed, that's just, that's just to me, that's a recipe for corruption. When city council members make something illegal except for their friends. So I just wanted to say that and that I think that this is a perfect example of why we should allow ADUs by permission from the neighbors, rather than having us wedged into this place where not only is it not temporary, it's not a conditional use, it's going to run with the, because the city council wanted to have a look at every single one, that means they had to make it something that would go to them, which is a text amendment. So it kind of puts us in a pickle, that decision. Because now it's a situation where we have to go through city council. It's much longer process for somebody like this young couple trying to just like get the bills paid. And it's, it's just generally hard. I don't think that we always have the thing that we're trying to do, we don't make it easy. And I think that our processes need to be aligned to that, so just food for thought.
Can I, can I ask the city some questions before we have more discussion? I just have, would like some more information on a few things. So can I ask you, would they meet parking requirements for an ADU off-street? So that we don't have issues with parking on the street?
That would be, they would be required to, to show that they can, as part of their rental license upload.
Have they showed that to you?
I did not check their, their rental license upload, but I believe that they, they have the ability to meet that requirement.
Okay.
That's a requirement to the next step, and if they couldn't meet it, they couldn't have the ADU.
Okay. And can I ask, at one point, the city required that the owner live in the main unit and that they rent the basement, has that changed now?
Yes.
So now the owner can live in the basement, okay, great. And is there a way to say that we, we want to show that they meet these requirements and we're willing, because we know that there hasn't been a year since they've owned it, we're willing to give them an ADU on condition that that is shown? And if not, we revoke it, is that something we can do?
That is not something that's ever been done before. I don't know that there's language in the code that currently fits that situation.
I just wonder if the council could do that as part of a development agreement, since it is essentially a zone change?
It is ordinance text amendment, so.
I wonder if they could do it as part of a development agreement?
That, I mean, that's, would make sense to me. So, okay, let's see, I think I had another... Let's see. Okay, that was it actually. Okay, thank you.
I'm, I'm curious for count, for staff, like how staff feels about the ownership requirements? Like if there was more detail that would help, would say if you made, you know, two or four out of the five conditions or three out of the four conditions or whatever. Because this one, the way that the, the text reads, it's, it doesn't say, you know, it's all, right? Each subsection, it's all.
Right. So if the city council were to approve this, it wouldn't offend the staff? Where the staff is coming from is the zoning administrator and I, as the department head, are continually being criticized for not being hard enough and vigilant enough on ADUs, illegal use of ADUs, sham transactions and all of that. I don't know of another jurisdiction that even has a definition for sham transactions, but that's how serious Provo is about this. So as a staff, we're not going to cut slack, we can't, we've been, we get criticized weekly over this. If the city councils are comfortable with this, then that's fine, but staff's going to live by the rules as we interpret them.
That's fair.
I feel like that's kind of where I'm leaning with the staff recommendation is because we have to have justification for the decisions we, we make. And as a planning commission, our job is to interpret the ordinance. And so unless there's something in there that gives us a loophole like Commissioner Kendall was hoping for, then I feel like our hands are tied as well by, by that. And we can send on our concerns to the municipal council for them to say, they can, they can create their own wiggle room, but we can't. That having been said, it's also our job to interpret what the intent of the ordinance is. And I feel like the intent of those rules and those bullet points in the ordinance are to prove that the property is owner-occupied. And I feel like the owner has done that for us. And so for that reason, I would want to lean towards finding some creative solutions to help them because I feel like the intent of the ordinance is met. And to add to that, multiple people have admitted that there are lots of ADUs in this neighborhood that are undocumented, including the one we're talking about. And so though that creates sort of a weird situation, I appreciate that they're trying to do it correct. So right now, it's not being done correctly, which isn't ideal. But that they're trying to fix that and do it correctly is something that I would like to, and maybe that would have a a snowball effect in the neighborhood where others will do it correctly as well. And then we'll get ADUs that are licensed and overseen by the right paths instead of sneakily moving in and telling people not to tell people they're there. So I don't know, those are some opposite viewpoints that make me want to recommend it or not.
Can I ask a procedural question about how the city handles these sorts of applications? So there's the zoning change. And then they have to apply for a rental license and prove the owner occupancy, right? And that's two separate processes?
Correct.
And then do they have to renew that every year, that rental license and reprove owner occupancy?
So it gets automatically, the license gets automatically renewed upon payment of fees?
Okay.
Generally speaking, our code allows us to ask that they provide those documents every year. Right now, just based on manpower and people to ADUs and all of the other tasks, we generally only require them to upload or provide those documents after we've been told of some sort of...
Been an issue. Okay. Can I make a general comment? I think, I think one of the things, maybe we, if we don't see it in front of us, we know what's happening in the background that just based on housing market conditions, like this, this type, type of situation is not unusual. And if, and if there's no relief in housing prices, it will become more common. So where you have a parent helping finance a young family to qualify, it, it doesn't feel like the sham kind of things we're trying to prevent. So there's some uneasiness about that, but I still, I still value the ordinance as written, that it, I mean, because it's designed to prevent sham. So I guess my recommendation would be for council to look at ways to reconsider.
I would add to that to make it fair, so that it's, again, I'm concerned about, I guess, just the general situation is, certain neighborhoods have said, no, 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 no ADUs. They're probably the same people who call and complain about staff. But then when it's somebody they like, they come and say, yeah, do it. So that's not fair, you know? That's not fair application of the ordinance, it's not fair. That because they're a person you like or the type of person you like or the person who's like you, that they get to live there. And so that's, I guess, my take, I feel very uncomfortable with the kind of exclusivity that is essentially being created this way. So even though I do also think sham transactions should be taken care of, I think there needs to be a more fair way to make the exception.
Can I say that sham transactions ultimately make it very unfair for people who are wanting to do exactly this?
I agree, and I'm saying keep that, but find a way to make the application, the exception making fair, not, I know a city council member, she's in my ward, that's not fair.
I'm not taking away from what you're saying, I'm just saying, in addition to, yeah, sham transactions make it really unfair for people. Because then people can't do this, they can't obtain the home because somebody else has occupied it and they will occupy it for years and years and years and years because they can when they're just moving people around in it, does that make sense?
Yeah, I totally agree with that. I, I think that one of the hard things about this is that this could look like that.
Well, okay.
You know, and so how do you, how do you, I'm saying, I would recommend that we make a better distinction, but that's fair, that's applied fairly.
I agree. I, I personally, we have a lot of ADUs in our neighborhood, we love the ADUs, we love the people that live there. It works really nicely for, for all of us. I think that they, if the neighbors support it, that's great. I think it was a little bit telling that the neighbor said, that it says on the form that we agree that this, this owner. So they're, they're probably agreeing because they know these, this people and they're great, right? So what if we have to make decisions based on people that we don't know? And, and create it equal and even all across the board? And so that's why I feel like it's really hard to get around this ordinance. You, you really need to, I can see why the city says, we got to stick to this. But there could be a way to, to say, we recommend that you actually approve it with the ability to revoke it if they don't meet the conditions within the timeframe that is outlined. Because they can't do that at this point.
Right.
That would give people the ability to buy these homes, do this, prove that that's what they're doing and maintain it.
Yes, that's exactly why I brought up the city council thing before, because that's exactly what we were arguing, to keep that way, that is both allows for this kind of case, so that takes care of the exceptions, but also doesn't do it just through, like, you have to know somebody. That's, that's the problem, it was an administrative process and they got rid of that, so that's my point.
Okay, Matthew's been really patient here, so.
No, no worries. I realize this is a political matter almost more than anything these days. I'm a huge proponent of ADUs, I think this is exactly the condition that we want to be happening. There are cities that I know of who have, across the board, when this conversation starts, just say, hey, we're going to allow ADUs everywhere to avoid this kind of exclusionary kind of concept. There are others that I know of who have said, any illegal ADU becomes legal without question. And then because they're so bad, some of them are such terrible living conditions without any oversight and ability to give oversight, that kind of solves that. If, if we're not, if we're seeing more illegal ADUs in our city than legal ADUs, we actually have a problem with the process overall. And I hope we can put some real energy about fixing that, but I think there's a lot of education. I think this is an easy decision, except that the staff says no, because the interpretation of the code is no. But I actually think we have a loophole. Roman numeral or double I A has not claimed income tax deduction or depreciation in the previous tax year. You didn't buy it until January, so you couldn't. I think you qualify, I think that's our loophole. So I'm inclined to say, yes, this is exactly what we want, we want to reward these people. The alternative is, I've now forgotten your name, is it Gibson? The Gibsons are going to move, would have bought a condo. And when the first baby arrived, they would have moved. And they would have moved, Knapp, Mrs. Knapp? How many kids could you put in a two-bedroom condo? Not nine. Sorry, not nine. I'll, I'll repeat for you so you don't have to walk, right? You, you can come up. We just love seeing your smiling face. Right? If you had started in a condo, how many of the nine kids would you have been able to stay in the same condo?
I think we would have had two children.
And then you would have had to go, and so you'd lose all your network. Right? This is the problem we have in our country, it's not a Provo unique problem.
We lived in that house for twenty years. And I have to say that my mother-in-law helped us with the down payment of that house. So it's kind of the same situation.
Yeah.
We couldn't afford it, we were students. So we literally had neighbors that were like, well, if you can't afford the whole house, you shouldn't be able to have it. And I'm like, who can? Who can't? And especially right now, I literally have... who can? Who can? And especially right now, I literally have, uh, on one side, we have a house going for a million two, and I have another side, on the other house that sold for almost nine hundred. I'm like, my kids, I have eleven kids right now, none of them can afford a place.
And ten years ago, those same houses were three hundred and fifty thousand.
Yeah, we bought our house.
So, so this is a problem that this is one of the only real answers in an existing city is to help facilitate some of this.
Yes.
So I just wanna go on record that, that, that's how I feel about this. So, thank you for your input.
Sure.
I think if you can grow up and be like Mrs. Nap, this will be a good thing, right? Um, and so, but I do think there's a loophole, right? I think I'm in, I'm interpreting there's a loophole, I think the planning commission, and I, I, I love this idea that you came up with, that maybe there's a development agreement. Eh, and I also, what Joel said is there's kind of two parts of the process. We actually think this is a great idea, even if they can't currently, based on the city's interpretation, get the license. But we can approve this process and say, yeah, you'll get the license as soon as you can come up with that administrative fix, or you have another tax, and until then, you're probably gonna do it illegally anyway. And I just think this is a slam dunk, as long as we're not too caught up with the letter versus the spirit of the law.
Yeah, I, I, I agree, that's, that's an impossible requirement to meet, right? Two A, little two, little I.
For a year at least.
Double I, big A.
Well, you have to own it for a year and then you can, right?
Yeah.
So I, I think, yeah, if we have something like that, that we recommend that the city council could do, that seems to solve our problem because the biggest thing is I don't want to put the city in a situation where somebody, we set a precedent, and somebody can come in, I don't have to meet all those things because you didn't make them meet them. Does that make sense? So we don't wanna make it harder for the city to enforce what we already have.
Yeah, I think for me, a key is that it's a recommendation, we're not actually approving it. And so I'd be comfortable recommending approval and saying, oh, by the way, this exposes a problem in our system, you should also fix that.
Mm-hmm.
Right?
Yeah, I agree. I do think that the, preventing the abuse of the ADU situation is very important. And I just wanna, my points were just resolve it in a way that is fair. You don't get to pick your neighbors when someone buys a house. W- w- why do we do that with na- with, if they're renters, we get to choose who gets, you know, I, I don't know, I just don't like that.
Any other thoughts?
So the only way I feel comfortable saying that we would uh recommend approval is if they understand that clearly we think they need to have some sort of ability to allow people to prove this, so that somebody can't come and say, you had a precedent.
So the question is, do we recommend denial unless they can find that? Because that's, we wouldn't have to have new findings for that, or do we recommend approval? Um, if they find that.
I think didn't.
What puts, what, what is more
I think one option is, and I think this actually meets that, maybe, tell me if I'm wrong, but with Matthew's interpretation of the law, of the code.
Those are our new findings.
We can say, we recommend approval based on the reading that the first year you own a home, you didn't claim a deduction last year, and so you automatically qualify until the second year when you gotta prove it, right?
But you don't technically have to prove it the second year as it stands.
Uh, I think technically you do, they just choose not to enforce that part.
They could ask, so you could make a note somewhere in the record, probably. The licensing record, not this record, right? To follow up on year two to get documentation that closes that loop.
That wouldn't even require a development agreement, because that's something that's already in the, the system plan.
We can put alerts on properties and, and make notes in licenses.
I think that does it too.
Yeah, that works.
Yeah, I'm with you, I under.
Okay, so how do we wanna create this motion? Cuz we can go either direction, right? Recommend denial or recommend approval?
I think if we have the, if we're going to say that the interpretation of that section is our new finding, then I think our paper trail supports changing the staff recommendation. Because then we have, we have something in the code that we're interpreting differently than they interpreted, so we're not just making up rules.
And then maybe we add the recommendation that they check in a year from now in order to confirm the documentation.
Yeah.
Or a development agreement.
They can even, yeah, schedule an administrative.
Whatever the city council.
Well, I don't think we can recommend a development agreement, but we can say the city council can come up with another solution that's different than ours.
Okay.
Could we just leave it vague and say, city council should find a solution that would en- ensure that this is documented a year from now?
Yeah, yeah, and, and I would also say we could include a recommendation, city council, um, cuz the, the, the fact that this doesn't get reviewed on an annual basis, kind of, I'm a little bit uncomfortable with that. And if it's a matter of staffing and resources, then, and, and and it's big enough, it feels like a big enough outcry from citizens, they complain about illegal ones, then I would recommend city council uh fund
Yeah.
better enforcement mechanism.
I would also like to point out that if we make this process easier for people, then the money that we're putting into illegal occupancy enforcement could go into follow-up on the legal occupancy instead, because I think that's why we have so much illegal occupancy, cuz A, they don't know that they're supposed to be following a process, and B, they don't wanna jump through the hoops to, to do it if they do know about it. So that might help a problem that's an ongoing problem as well.
Can I ask you, Mr. Pepperoni, is it better for us then to recommend denial and let this, and the city council will hear what our concerns are and let them fix that? And create, come up with something to fill, you know, to allow this to be approved, that we really want to approve it, it's just as it stands, we can't create that solution. Or is it better to approve it, recommend approval, wi- with those same pieces of you know?
I, I think Ms. Henson identified a really clear way to do that, and it was to recommend approval with different findings or different reasons than staff gave, correct? Yeah, I think that's very legitimate.
Yeah, because we're interpreting that section about um, no tax record, cuz he hasn't owned it for a year, that
Right.
we're okay with it, we feel like he meets it.
And what does that do for other people coming who might be in a sham transaction, who say?
Doesn't do anything until the city council rules on that issue.
Okay, alright.
But I think we also wanna.
Prove also, like eventually, if we're gonna have a follow-up, even if they got uh temporarily approved, they'd have to then prove it later.
Well, but it's not even temporary approval, it is a year approval. That's what they get until the city follows up.
Well, the rental license has to be renewed every year.
Uh, you could do that right now, you could put a note. Well, not right now, cuz they haven't applied for a license, but you could make that happen, even without the city council, right? You could do that on any property, say, we need to follow up on this one in a year, and double check that they're following the license rules.
Um, yes, our program does allow us to put alerts on properties, it doesn't specifically allow us to schedule a specific follow-up time, but anyone who searches the property can see an alert, so we can put as the notice contact and verify with property, and we can put verbiage in there that gives a specific timeframe for when a follow-up should be done.
And someone would see that when they applied the next year, cuz they'd pay a fee, someone would have to look at that account.
It would pop up eh, anytime you search the property, we, the alert is tied to the property, not the license, so, yes.
I, I feel like there's still a loophole then, because eh, you said earlier that they just have to pay by online renewal and don't have to show it unless you ask them to, so does the alert actually show up if they just submit their fee next year?
Um, it is, it is tied to the property, so that alert is always there anytime you search the license and on the license, it will show that there is an alert.
So the person entering that the fee was paid would see that and ask for it, or at what point does the fee just not renew it?
Um, so the, the fee would still renew it because that generally goes through customer service, but our zoning enforcement team would, they're more in the weeds, they'll see the property, they'll see the license, um, and we can also just have them put it on their schedule but a year out to have.
I'm just trying to come up with the realistic process that doesn't involve staff turnover and it getting lost in the shuffle.
Can we just recommend the city council work that out?
We can, we can, but I just wanna make sure it's realistic, because if it's a if it's a computer program that's not actually going to alert you unless you search the property and nobody reports them as doing anything illegal, then there will be no follow-up.
I think city council is highly motivated to prevent that happening. And the fact is, if that does happen, it falls back on, on them and the way that this has been legislated, so.
Okay, thank you.
Can I, is there another loophole, actually, because they were in escrow when that was changed? Does that allow you to say, we grandfather people in that were in escrow when a thing like that?
They have to have it filed already, the application.
Not by ordinance now, yeah.
Okay, so it sounds like we're comfortable doing it as a recommendation for approval, is that correct? Okay, with the recommendation that this get, you know, enforced.
And they work out the process to not be problematic.
Yeah. Okay, someone wanna make that motion?
I'll make it.
Go for it.
Okay, I um, move that we forward a positive recommendation for item five. A recommendation for approval for Christina Gibson requesting an ordinance text amendment to Provo City Code fourteen point three zero point zero two zero in order to allow an accessory dwelling unit on property in the R one ten zone located at thirty eighty North Bannock Drive in the Indian Hills neighborhood. Um, the findings for that um recommendation are that we have interpreted the code to um, exempt them from needing to show records this year. And that we would ask that the municipal council find a way to um, enforce that when they uh apply for their dwelling license, rental dwelling license next year.
Any one second?
One second.
Any discussion on the motion? Okay, let's start the voting. So Joel did it.
Aye.
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 And I'll vote aye, so item five passes unanimously. Okay, that's all of our items tonight. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.